Hello, welcome. This is the Zoning Board of Appeals. Thank you for joining us. My name is Janice Tatarca. I'm joined today by Hector Velez, Will Cecchio, John De Priest, Marilyn Vega Torres, Joseph Mahoney, Joan Cromwell, and Hugo Perdomo. And the late Hugo Perdomo. Our first case in front of us today is 2024-01-65 Harvard Street, Alcino Gaspar Neto and Catherine Reese for special permit seeking approval for off-street parking which does not meet the requirement of being within five feet from the yard, side yard property line in the required front yard setback. Please remember when you speak to speak into the microphones. That will be, and I will be reminding you throughout the night for that. When we were last here, we, well, John, why don't you tell us, this went to the planning board. Can you tell us what the planning board said?
The planning board recommended approval provided that the petitioner provided an updated plan showing existing conditions. They have done that. I've sent you a copy, and there's a copy on the screen.
Thank you, and we appreciate that because that was the last conversation we had, that your plan did not match what was going on. So, why don't you talk us through what your plan, what the changes are? What is your, what's the difference between the plan that you proposed and the plan that's in front of us now?
My name is Alcino Neto, 65 Harvard Street. So, at the, we, before, we tried to put a three parking spot, so we only got approval for two.
Well, you haven't gotten approval, you had a recommendation for two.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah. And we have the retained wall. We changed it on the front of the door for entrance to the basement, and we fixed the plan he make wrong, the stairs, but right now the stair is good. And we moved the curb cut on the middle, non-right side for the cars can turn inside the property.
So, one of the things that, that we like to see is that it's not just a whole, you know, one of the things that was a problem initially in our conversation was how, we don't want the whole thing to just look like a paved front yard. So, what, what kind of proposal, can, John, what, what kind of things can you, can they propose that would green up this space a little bit?
Well, they are showing permeable pavers which will allow for the wa, stormwater to seep in, and depending on the type of permeable pavers could allow for some greenery to grow there as well. Other than that, they could provide for some landscaping around the, around the walls to offset some of that.
Are you, would you be comfortable with doing something like that? I mean, you know, that, just for me, I just, I'm, I'm jumpy, I apologize, but I think there needs to be something that breaks up this feeling of just a big open space.
Yeah, for to tell you true, the paver is a little bit expensive. Asphalt is cheaper, but when we put asphalt, John mentioned, we need to put the drainage, so that cost me twenty-five or more. So, we prefer put pavers, and that is, the water absorb between blocks. So, I will, I will do this.
And is there someplace that you could plant around?
Exactly, so I will put the pavers on the front, and the green around, on the top of the retainer walls, and that will create something nice for the trash.
So, what we, what we usually do, and this is just when, when something that happens, we'll ask you to come to the planning, if that's the case, if you, if you get approval, to come back to the planning department and show them what you propose to do for green space. We don't make you necessarily do it here, but you come to them and you say, "I'm gonna put this here," or "Put that there." That's what we generally ask for.
Yeah.
Okay, this is, it's still a public hearing. I'm gonna open this up. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this? Please come up and give your name and address, please, and speak into the microphone.
Hello, everyone.
Yeah, don't, t, to get to the microphone.
Elaine Flynn.
Mm-hmm.
My address is 66 Harvard Street. And I had a couple of questions about the kinds of vehicles that can be parked in that, in those two parking spaces, should they get approved. Does it allow for, like, construction equipment, bobcats, commercial vehicles, that kind of thing?
Not if we say there isn't. If they can't, is there, John's gonna look into that, but we can, we can look into that.
There is a separate ordinance, not part of the zoning ordinance, that limits the size of the vehicles that can be parked on properties, I think, and I would tell you what it is, but I don't remember, and I don't want to quote something I don't remember. But there is a separate ordinance that limits the size of the vehicles.
So, a small bobcat, would that be okay?
I don't know. I, again, I don't, I just don't remember what the ordinance says.
Okay, that's my concern.
It's not a zoning ordinance, so I haven't memorized that.
And the second thing, I just wanted to clear up a little bit. We talked, sorry, last time, and again, at the planning board, Eric made a comment about if they are living at the property, and I wanted to question that.
If they are what? I'm sorry, say that again.
Pardon me?
If they are what?
If they are living.
Oh, living in the property, okay.
At the property.
Mm-hmm.
And I wanted to question that point as well, just because, to set the, the record straight. The assessor's records indicate the property was purchased by 65 Harvard Street LLC, and the owners were living in Wilmington. And the owner was 65 LLC, living in, at, I think it was Ella Avenue in Wilmington. And there is a property that was purchased in Wilmington by Catherine Reese and Alcino Neto, Neto, in Wilmington, and they filed a declaration of homestead at the same time. So, it seems to me they're not owner occupants, but rather investors, just as a matter of comment.
Okay, thank you.
And other than that, I don't have any comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this?
Good evening. Adam Vanyo, 70 Fremont Ave. I abut them on a diagonal point, on the back of my property. I, I think it's a great idea that they're doing, and able to help with, and any greenery they could do is great, and the pavers, if that works out, that's fine. And any cars that can stay off the street is more space for anyone else, I suppose, so I think I'm all supportive. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak on this? There being none, I'm closing the public participation portion of this hearing. Do I have, so the hearing officers on this are going to be myself, Mr. Mahoney, Ms. Vega Torres, and Mr. Perdomo. So, guys, any comment, or ladies, any comments? Thoughts? Joe?
Well, the question is, based on what was just recently mentioned, it's owned by a trust?
Yeah, but we don't, a lot of the stuff we do is owned by trusts.
Yeah, okay.
Isn't that not true, Joe?
Ownership is not a zoning issue.
Yeah, I say it's not our issue, yeah.
Okay.
You go.
Is the basement finished?
No.
What's the use of that entrance on the driveway?
Because we have a lot of rats on a house, so they have, on the right side of the house, they have a metal door, so when we have a lot of rain, so we have the full rain inside of the house, so we try to cover the door, you know, and we use the front door for storage, whatever. Always when we, we rebuild the first floor, we create a laundry and a mechanic room in the basement, so it's totally empty, so that's why we put the front door inside of the, the parking spot.
It was there previously? Is that door was there previously?
Sorry?
Is that door was there previously?
Oh, no, no, just bigger windows, so we put, uh...
So, you make it, you made the door?
Uh, we made the, uh, not yet, but we, we put the concrete.
Your plan is to put a door there?
Yeah.
Your plan is to replace with the door?
Yeah. I, I think that one is part of the building department, something like that.
You know that if you get relief from parking, you don't have access, none of your tenants or you have access to an off-street parking pass?
Yes.
You're aware of that, okay. John, do you have any, does the department have any thoughts?
We have a list of conditions, standard conditions as applicable. There should be no more than two off-street parking spaces. Residents of the building should not be eligible to participate in the city's on-street parking sticker program, and this has to be placed in all lease and condo documents. No storage of trash or recycle bins, barrels, boxes, or bags on the driveway. There's a street tree in front of the house. If there's a need to relocate or replace the tree, replacement shall be of a species and size similar to the existing tree, and replacement or relocation shall be at the expense of the petitioner. And that's it.
And the board shall review any green, planting plan. The department, I mean, shall review a planting plan.
What about signage? Like signage? Is that a requirement?
Well, it's a private home, I don't know that...
Just to make people aware of those cars there. And would we be able to, like, revise the type of vehicle that parks there?
Can we determine, can we limit the type of vehicle that may be parked there?
I would have to check. I don't know, but I'll, I'll check, and if that's so...
Yeah, I mean, because it would, yeah. I mean, I think it should be used for vehicles, not for, like, a bobcat or, like, heavy equipment.
If allowed...
Machinery, it should be, you know, a car.
So, if allowed, if, if allowed, then we, if it is appropriate, then we would limit this parking to non-construction vehicles.
So, yeah, so, excuse me, we don't have any construction vehicle. The bobcat is there right now because we under construction.
Yeah.
So, that's the why, the only, why, the reason the vehicle is there, it is one bobcat, it's a small of, this small car, so it is on a corner. We clean the house, there's nothing for complaint with the neighbors, you know? So, the lady, she come over here and said, "We have enough parking, parking spot," because she has a, on the front, the same thing on my house, she has a big spot for a car, around the eight cars, so that's easiest, to, she said, it is, they have a lot of spot because for, she has a driveway for her for eight cars, so...
Well, so basically, if, so if we, if we, if we put that requirement, that you don't care?
Yeah, no, exactly, so I just explain to you guys, I will park...
Yeah, no, no, we appreciate that, thank you.
I spoke with the John because last week, I think the guys remember, I was very, like, feeling bad with my tenants. See, I think it's, I'm thinking only on me and my family parking over there. I would keep thinking, thinking, say, okay, I spoke with everybody, that, what are you guys thinking? So, they say, "You know, I don't, I don't have a car. My brothers on third floor, they have one car, so we can park it, two cars on the front, and we good." I, I was thinking, I, I can't put people in trouble, you know, if, and only think on my family, so that's why I keep sending new plans, expand a little bit more, but I will do the driveway, and I think it will better for everybody on my property now.
So, Marilyn, if we can put that in there, it may not be, it might not be completely necessary, but just in case, but if it's, but we don't know if it's even legitimate for us to do, but we can write it, if we, yeah. Any other thoughts? Any recommendation?
They don't have any light, really?
They need, no variance, no, just a special permit, what?
Lights.
Oh, lights, no. It's a private house, right? I mean, it's just a, we don't need lighting.
Will there be any lighting in the...
Yes, both, right and left side for help to park in the, the car. It's a motion, it's a motion light.
Well, then you should make sure that the lighting points down and doesn't go into anybody else's yard.
Exactly, exactly, just to help if you clean the snow or something.
For safety.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you, yeah. Do you have a motion?
All right, I make a motion. I make a motion to approve case number 2024-01-65 Harvard Street, Alcino Gaspar Neto and Catherine Reese for a special permit seeking approval for off-street parking, which does not meet the requirements.
But, but two, so we approve two, two parking spaces with their requirements
Two parking spaces with the standard conditions that...
That John had, no, with the conditions John articulated. Do I have a second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Okay. Don't build a, you got it, be good.
Okay, so, excuse me, what's the next step now?
I, I have to write up the decision. It takes me a couple of weeks, it then gets recorded with the city clerk, and there's a 20-day appeal period. After the end of that 20-day appeal period, you get an official copy that there's been no appeal, you go register with the registered D., then you start meeting the conditions.
For the curb cut, so we take the papers and give it to DP them?
But not until you get the approval, you gotta wait.
Right. Not until you get the approval, not until the 20 days are up.
Until they pay.
You can go, you can go talk to them about it, but they're not gonna do it until those 20 days are up.
All right, I appreciate it. And we can start the papers?
You're gonna talk with them about the, so you've agreed to the pavers, we said we want pavers, permeable pavers, and you're just gonna come and talk to them about what kind of planting you want to put around.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay? The next case is 2024-02-10 Wesley, Wesley Street, Jose M. Sanchez, pastor for the Ministerio Internacional Cristo Viva Church, for special permit. John, what did the planning department have to say, the, the planning board have to say about this?
The planning board recommended amended approval with conditions.
Okay. Is there anything different that's being proposed than was proposed at our last meeting?
No, the, this new plan just has, there's a landscaping on this new plan, so we just put on, show the landscaping.
Could you introduce, I'm sorry, I apologize, please introduce yourself formally.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, Thomas Curran for the Church Ministerio Nacional Church. The, this, this new plan simply shows here, and here, and here, and then around the backside of the, the house, on the front side of the house, the landscaping and the trees, and the types of flowers and plantings, which was not on the original plan.
John, are you good with that?
Yes, I reviewed it this afternoon and fine with it.
So, this is a public hearing, and is, and it's, so I'm gonna take people's comments, but the first thing, I'm gonna do something a little differently than I normally do for this one. I'm gonna ask if there's anybody here who wishes to speak in opposition, because we had so many people at the last meeting who wished to speak in favor, which was wonderful. It was very moving, it was, we, personally, I enjoyed listening to what everybody had to say, but I first want to hear if there's anybody who wants to speak in opposition. This is clearly, everybody has the opportunity to speak, but, you know, if there's, we don't have to hear a lot more positive, is what I'm saying. We've heard a lot of really good stuff, and again, I'm not taking away anybody's opportunity to speak. It's a public forum. If you wish to speak, you have a couple of minutes to do that, but the first thing I'm gonna do is to ask if there's anybody who wishes to speak in opposition to this. Okay, there being none, I'm not closing the hearing. I'm going to ask, based on what I just said, whether there's anybody who wishes to speak, or are you guys willing to let us start to deliberate? You guys are fabulous. I am going to say, so with that being the case, I'm gonna close the public particip- I'm sorry, sir, did you wanna speak?
I was gonna say, what happened, have you...
Okay, then I'm gonna close the public participation portion of this hearing. So, John, talk to us about your thoughts about what needs to be, what kind of things we need to do to just improve this.
Well, I had a number of conditions on there, but they've met some, they provided the landscape plan, they provided the lighting plan. I do have a concern about the lighting plan, and particularly, it's this lighting here. It looks as if it's aimed to shine on the abutts property. These floodlights right here.
I told you I was gonna say it.
Yes, I see, one of, one of the lights appears to be shining on, on the neighbor's property, so that'll have to be corrected.
Right, and I could, and I can, that would be a recommendation of the site, of the site plan, which you'll get voted on at the end of the month.
Yes.
Okay, all right. The planning board recommended approval with standard conditions, design review by my department. At a minimum, the valet service for the garage parking shall be available at all services or masses at least one hour prior to and until all vehicles have been removed from the garage. The structure at 19 Clyde Street is proposed for residential use. Any change to the residential use requires approval of the Zoning Board of Appeals after a public process, and please submit a parking management plan.
Are you comfortable with all of those proposals?
Yes, we are.
Any thoughts from the board? Do we have a, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that case 2024...
Talk into the microphone, please.
Make a recommendation that case 2024-02-10 Wesley Street be approved with the conditions set forth.
Do I have a second? You all in favor?
Aye.
You're all set. You have to wait, it's gonna get written up, you need 20 days, blah, 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 and then they have a site plan.
And then we'll see you on the 23rd.
The site plan.
Right, nine to seven to sixteen, 23rd, yeah.
Yeah, 23rd, until 23rd.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, and, and thank you all for, I'm glad you came, and I'm glad you were quiet. Thank you, thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. This next one is very, we can do quickly because we just have a motion to continue. 2024-03-63 Harvard Street, Sergio St. Laurent, we have a motion to continue. Do I have a recommendation? Joe?
Make a motion to continue.
Second, you go, all in favor?
Aye.
You can vote on this one, Marilyn. No, Marilyn, no, Joan. No, she can't, no, never mind, you can't, you cannot. I couldn't, never mind. The next one is, we're gonna wait a few minutes, because that was, that was procedural, so now we'll wait.
Oh, I'm sorry, that would be continued to April, that would continue to May 14th. That one would be continued, May 14th. I'm sorry, thank you, Frosty. Thank you. The next case in front of us is 2024-04-688 Broadway, Deña Fernandez, for a special permit seeking approval to establish a barber shop and beauty salon. This is the first time we'll be hearing this, so we will not be voting on this tonight. So, this will, hi, this will go to the planning board on April 23rd, and then back here on May 14th, so just so you know, okay, so, and again, speaking to the microphone, please.
If I may, it'll be, you know, May meeting will be at the Senior Center across the street.
Ah, that's, okay, we finalize that?
Of the board, for the board's information, the city council is holding their budget hearings Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of the week, of that week in May, and given the size of what we've assumed your agenda will be, we're gonna move it over to the Senior Center.
Okay, please introduce yourself, and Patel, it's your proposal.
Hi, my name is...
Get closer, there you go.
Hi.
No, that has to stay open, sir. Thank you.
My name is Digna Fernandez. I'm one of the owner, we're trying to open a beauty and a barber shop salon at that location, 688 Broadway, so I hope...
What was there, what's there now, anything?
It isn't anything. It was Christopher Coqueras Insurance Agency.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
A Christopher Coqueras Insurance Agency was over there before.
Okay. And when was that?
And I wanna try to open a barber and a beauty salon.
Was it recent? Okay, yeah, okay. Okay, is there anybody here who wishes to speak on this? Okay, any, any questions?
So, is it two different spaces, or is it one space and you're splitting?
It is one space, but it's big one, so I just wanna do, like, like cosmetic wall to separate the women's from the men's, you know? We, as a woman, don't like men's look at us when we doing aralos or something like that, so we wanna do, like, a cosmetic wall to separate the spaces, but it's gonna be all in the same.
How many seats, how many...
For barber will be three, three seat for barber, and four for the hairdressers.
And will you, are you going to be renting out the chairs, or are you going to be?
Uh, I'm trying to, you know, but it's better work for by, by present that we are with, with...
But you're, so, but you're not planning to necessarily bring in your own stylists or whatever, you're going to rent out the chairs?
Yeah, the barber chair gonna be rentals, but the hair, the hairdresser, nah.
Say that again, I'm sorry, I'm, it's my hair.
The barbers will be rentals.
Okay.
Because that's the way they work, but the hairdresser gonna be by the...
And are you moving this from another location?
No, exactly. I was, I was a partner with someone on Jamaica Lane before, but it wasn't undermining and nothing, but they had to close the shop because of the rent.
Is it any parking?
Yeah, we have, like, three to four parking space on the back of the building.
What would be the hours of operation?
I couldn't hear you well.
The hours, what hours?
The hours. I'll try to open seven days a week, but Monday through Saturday from 10 to 7:00, and Sundays 10 to 4:00, so meaning the last customer at 6:00, so by 7:00, 7:30, we out.
Does parking is for clients or for the employees?
It gonna be for both, so most of the time we work by appointments, but we're gonna do walk-ins, welcomes, because it's a lot of school and everyone, so everyone's welcome to come.
In, in the places that you worked before, was, were there a lot of people who drove there, or there were people who lived in the neighborhood who used your services?
All over. I have customers from everywhere, like Walton, even K-Cup.
Okay, so it was all, it was, you spread all out. So, people did drive in, is what I'm saying?
They drive in, yes.
On the other side, is the check cashing place still there?
Yes.
So, do they share the same parking lot?
Yeah, the parking lot is a BSB's, they have part of the parking lot for them and part for me.
So, this is the part that's just for you? The four spaces are just for you?
Yes.
And then on the other side, there's the four other spaces for them, because I believe it's like eight spaces here or so?
It's more than four, it's more than four spaces, I think, yeah. I'm a rabbi. Four on each side? Yes.
And the parking, so that's in the middle there, the entrance and exit is the same...
The same entrance.
The board may remember that this came before the board several years ago. I don't, I don't remember, do you remember? It came for, to, used to convert it to office space, and the board approved the four spaces for each side. There is a, there is a light system and a sign on the exit where they crosses the drive, the sidewalk for pedestrian warnings.
Yeah, I, yeah. Because I can't do it anymore.
It's okay.
I manage the Christopher, my name is...
No, no, not, not yet. You gotta get up in front of the, you wanna speak in favor of this, you gotta get up in front of the microphone and give your name and address.
I came to be helpful. I manage the Christopher Coqueras Insurance Agency, and we were there for many years, and I came to all the board meetings, so I remember, not the exact dates or anything, but I remember that we came to all the board meetings, so I can remember some of the, I can answer some of the questions.
Okay. Thank you.
But there are four spaces on each side, and the Western Union is on one side, and the insurance office is on the other side, and there are two hour parking out front. Also, each business has eight parkings, I mean, there's eight spaces, but four for each business in the back, and there's a drive-through with the safety lights and everything for them to come in and out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this? Okay, I'm, this, we're not gonna be closing this today, we're gonna keep this open to our next meeting, so the planning board on April 23rd, you have to come in front of the planning board on April 23rd here, but then on May 14th, across the street at the Senior, Senior Center, okay?
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
The next case in front of us is 2024-05-222 Webster Ave, Paolo Evangelista, for special permit seeking approval for driveway opening to create parking spaces, which per the City of Chelsea zoning ordinance is not permitted within the required front yard setback nor within five feet of any wall containing ground, floor, or basement windows, not within five feet of the side lot line. As, who's that? Ah, there you go. As with the previous case, we will not be deciding this today. You will come to the planning board on April 23rd, and you will come before the zoning board on May 14th at the Senior Center.
Okay.
So, why don't you introduce yourself and tell us what you're proposing?
My name is Paolo Evangelista. I am the owner of the 222 Webster Avenue.
Do you, where do you live, sir? We'd like your, your home address, too.
My home address is 222 Webster Avenue, Chelsea.
Oh, it is 222, okay.
So, my proposal is, right now, we have one park, I have one parking spot in front of the house and on the street, and I'm proposing to a space inside the property, so that's why I'm asking for the curb cut. So that's why I'm asking for the curb cut to make a driveway, to have two parking spots in front of the house.
And you know that when you do that and you get relief for parking, that you don't get access to a, a town, a city, um, parking sticker?
Yes.
Okay. So show, so point out what you're, what's, show us what you're doing, I, it's a little confusing for me, show, just point out what you're pro- Bring them, bring it with you, just take that one, it's easier. Thank you, Mr. Evangelista.
So the, the proposal is, um, to have, uh, the curb cut here on the street, this is Web, uh, Webster Avenue and then we propose to make a curb cut here so we can park two cars over here as design in here in the proposal.
And is there any green around there, any green space?
Yeah, it's gonna be green over here on this side because, uh, um, on both side, uh, there's like a pathway with, uh, asphalt right now. So, and there's green in here in the mirror where I'm proposed to put the two parking spot.
And there's one there now, is that what you said? Or is there none there now?
There is one parking spot in, on the street, not, not on the property.
Okay, okay, so we lose one street axe, but we get two off the street?
Yes.
That's what you're proposing, huh? Thoughts? John, any thoughts that, from the, uh, let's see?
Uh, yeah, the department has a concern here and I will show you as soon as I pull up the picture. What happened to it? The concern is that, um, the lot is only twenty-five feet wide and, uh, he's proposing an eighteen-foot wide driveway with just three and a half on each side. And what I'm trying to avoid is a situation like this, this happens to be in Medford where they've paved every yard, uh, all the way down the block with no greenery left there, so we, the goal here is to try to avoid something like this and having the cars just on, on each side.
That's really unattractive.
It, it's very unattractive and it, and it turns out to be just one continuous curb cut.
And so you're, so what you're saying is, so tell us how that relates, how you feel that they relate here?
Well, in that there are two spaces side by side with three and a half foot wide greenery on each side and three and a half feet is not very deep, it's not much more, deeper than the desk in front of you.
Okay.
One, one, uh, parking space won't be good for you?
It's a two-family house, so that's why I'm asking like one space per apartment.
You live in there?
Yes.
What, first floor, second floor?
Second floor.
What is the, uh, pavement gonna be where the cars will park?
Uh, would be asphalt. Right now, there's like a pathway on both side of the house to go in the backyard, it's, it's consists of asphalt.
Would it help, John, if it were, uh, pebble or?
Well, the planning board is probably gonna ask for permeable pavers, yep.
And we'll, and we'll be asking for as much green as possible if we choose to approve it, so you should think about how, what kind of green you would wanna put there.
Yep.
Plants or something. Any other questions?
Yeah, what's the common trend there now?
Talking to your microphone, please.
What's it, what's the common trend there now in terms of, um, parking curb cuts and parking?
The other, uh, unit, the other structures on the other side all have wider lots and they all have off, tree parking with greenery. Uh, it, the issue here is, his lot's only twenty-five foot wide, all the others have, are much wider than that.
So it's the house in the middle?
It's, yes, it's-
So that would be a completely-
This house right here.
So you really have nothing than a driveway in the front?
Right, right.
Is that, but there is a handicap, a handicap sign there in front of his house.
The handicap?
A handicap sign?
You said that, that-
Uh, the handicap sign, I brought it to the attention of the city clerk's office. Uh, it's the person, the, the person who requested it died several years ago and it wasn't, the city clerk's office was never notified, um, it was sent to the D P W for removal.
Based on the slope, uh, is there gonna be any retaining wall necessary?
Not necessary because, uh, what are we gonna do here? We're gonna do the curb cut and then we're gonna, uh, it's like take a little bit of the dirt to put the pavement on.
What about the walkway, where is that gonna be, is that be enough, uh, that walkway will be removed?
Yes, because this one over here, we're just gonna put like a, a cement block here where we're gonna take it off a little bit to, to equalize the, the, uh, the floor where we're gonna put the pavement.
What about the other one?
So, but you can see, both side has a pathway with, uh, with, it's like a on both way is asphalt.
So are you proposing to put the green, to put the two parking spaces where there's the green?
Exactly, I'm only gonna have greens here on the side.
That's not what the plan shows.
No.
But the walkway will, you're gonna remove that walkway, the one on the left? Yeah, that one, you, you'll be removing that one?
This one?
For, for the driveway, yes.
No, because the parking spot was gonna be here in the mirror.
So, John, is the plan-
Is there enough space, is there enough space there for two cars?
Yeah, it does have enough space for two cars because it have twenty-five feet in, in front, the front.
The plan shows the driveway centered in that space, not off to one side.
Exactly.
Well, then, then that means you're, you can't, that you, you're not, you can't have your steps.
The way that you're showing it on this plan, it's gonna interfere with the steps for the front door, but you're, but you're saying that you're going to place it here instead between those steps and between the walk, between the walkway?
Exactly.
Okay, I'm, all I'm saying is that's not what you show on your plans.
And you, I, I mean, from my perspective, it's sort of, it, if it ends up become, if all you're doing is creating an entire, um, asphalt there and it would only make more sense, you know, sense to put one spot, then it's probably not worth it because you, well, because then you could park on the street. I just think it's, if that's, as you heard from, you may have heard from earlier, you know, we don't like it when everything, all you've got is one big driveway. I don't like it.
My plan is to open with the city allows, which is twelve feet. The entrance, the curb cut will be twelve feet.
Right, but if we approve it, but the entrance-
Exactly, yeah.
You're looking for a twenty-five foot curb cut. If, that's what you're looking for, is a twenty-five-
No, no, twenty-five is the, is the, is the length of the-
Take the microphone with you.
Twenty-five is the length of the front of the property.
But you've got, what's the, what's the width of those, your cars, what's the width of the car spaces, nine and nine?
Nine, nine and nine.
Eighteen?
Eighteen.
So you're still looking for an eighteen-foot curb cut?
Yes, which is gonna be on the side here where it's gonna be the green zone. If you bring up the, the picture again?
It's right here.
It's right here.
So you're gonna move the walkway to the left, are you gonna move that, the steps and the walkway to the left?
No, this is gonna stay.
But that, what John is saying is that's not what your plan is showing, your plan is showing that your driveway is in front of your door.
Yes, right here.
No, in front of the side door.
The, the width, the width is twenty-five feet on the lot, is that correct?
Twenty-five feet from here to here.
Okay, and you need eighteen, so you've got seven feet there, so if you balance it off, it's three and a half feet on either side.
Yes.
But that's not, but, but then you, but you just said, I'm not touching my stairs and then-
Doesn't look like-
That's why, because I don't have to.
But you do according to your plan, sir, what we're saying is, what you're asking for and what's in your plan do not connect, they're not the same. And so you're, in your plan, you have the, it's centered right in the middle and there's no room for your drop, your, your steps. If you look at the plan that you submitted, it doesn't, it doesn't match what you're proposing.
Where are you gonna put the drives, those barrels, if you do the driveway just like that in your plan?
John, 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 is it necessary for the applicant to submit a new plan?
I, I, I think there should be a plan showing what you want to do, this, this does not correlate with what you're telling the board. Because your doorway is right here.
It's right here.
No, it's not, that's, that's, it's not. And not from the picture. See, there's, it's right over there, there's a space there next to the garbage, next to the cans.
Yeah, but the, the length from, from, from the, the, um-
We're not disagreeing with that, sir, what we're saying is your plan does not show that. Your plan shows these two parking spaces slap dab in the middle, which means that you would be taking out your steps.
Can, can you bring the picture again, please, for the plan? Because there's a measure over there of the length of the, of the property from, from here to here.
It's, it's, they don't, the, you have, you're too far, you're right in the middle, the right-hand side has to be closer to the wall or the property line for it to be what you're showing in the picture. There's no way that in the, in what you've done, that you can put three and a half feet on both sides.
May I suggest that you direct the applicant to speak?
Yeah, why don't you actually, sir, why don't you follow up with John so it's clearer what our concerns are in the future? You're not, we're not deciding this tonight anyway, so, um, you can, you can talk to John and the department to figure out what, to clarify what we're trying to say, that would make it easier, I think. Are you, okay with that? Okay with that? So, yeah, so you gotta come back, talk to John before the planning board, because they're gonna ask the same question, the planning department and the planning board is gonna ask the same question in two weeks, so you better talk to John before then so that you guys can figure out what, how to fix this.
Okay. There's a public here, there's a-
I already asked, is there anybody here who wishes to speak on this? Nope.
Okay, all right.
Nope.
Right in here.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep this open, so, all right, so we'll see you, you're gonna be here, you're gonna be, on May fourteenth, you come back to the zoning board at the, at the Senior Center and then two weeks you gotta go to, and that's the twenty-third, you've gotta go to planning board here, but before then, talk to John about making sure this plan and what you want really mesh, because they don't look to right now, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next is twenty twenty four oh six thirty-four Pembroke Street, Bellum Realty LLC, special permit variance seeking approval to expand the structure by building a roof deck which does not meet the minimum requirements for five, side yard setback, rear yard setback, and combined yard setback. Again, like in the previous two cases, we will not be deciding this today because it is a special permit. You will go to the planning board on April twenty-third and May fourteenth at the Senior Center in front of us again. And keep in mind that when we meet in a month, that we will make sure that you need to meet all four conditions of a variance, since you're asking for a variance, so you'll need to meet all four of those, so be prepared to answer that. So please introduce yourself.
Good evening, I'm Nick Hall from Points North Construction, general contractor working at the property.
I'm Paul Bowyer, the architect.
And we're here with Mr. Jonah Jacob from Bellum Realty, the property owner, sitting behind us to the right. We are here tonight asking for permission, after spending several months rehabbing this property for the family, um, for permission to add a roof deck of approximately twenty-two by nineteen with a railing around it to the top of this, uh, building at thirty-four Pembroke Street. The outline of the deck.
Thank you.
So Pemb, Pembroke Street is sitting here at the bottom of the page, we're asking for permission, we're, can I see a dashed line here around the headhouse of the stairwell, of the rear stairwell? So it's effectively an L shape, it's not a true twenty-two by nineteen, that's twenty-two this way and nineteen this way. Um, again, around an existing stairwell with an existing door out to the roof. There's two H V A C units that sit up here and a skylight on the front, so we're staying roughly halfway back from the street. And be happy to answer any other questions, me and myself and the architect.
What's, what's behind?
Uh, the lot directly behind is another house, uh, you've got an aerial shot somewhere there?
It's another condo, um, complex behind and then they all have little yards behind them.
So it, it's a corner property with the exception that these parking spots are for that blue house you see in the background there? So there is no green space other than a small patio on the back of this property.
But it's not direct, so that, it's, it, there's space though, it's not directly a budding, you, the next house is not directly a budding your house?
No, there's a sp, there's a gap behind the house, between our house and the house behind.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's-
Yeah, there's a small gap.
There's a small, when you say small gap, what do you mean?
It's probably, yeah, nine foot-
Okay, so it's not a, it's, it's a patio, so I'll get, all right, okay, thank you.
And it actually, the, the building behind is not directly behind it, it's offset from it.
Correct.
There should have been one of the attachments had a- but we can do it this way too.
Look at this.
It's right here. This building?
Right here.
That's your place?
Yeah.
That's, oh, so that's-
So see, this, this building's offset.
That's the one that-
Yeah, this, this property goes all the way back.
Okay, so you don't, directly a but, the house next, okay, all right.
There's, there's an additional roof deck here, but the idea of keeping this deck to the back is, we're not obstructing the view out that way. And there's really nothing else around, other, it's all green space.
Questions?
Many people, you will say the roof will, uh, people can stay there?
The, the building was converted into three apartments, uh, three two-bedroom apartments, actually, yes.
And will everybody have access to the roof?
Yes, it's, it's common area.
We're looking, it's an odd shaped lot, obviously you folks can see that posted sample lot, so we're looking for an expansion for outdoor communal, um, gathering space.
Do I have access twenty-four seven, will be?
It will have access, access twenty-four seven to the tenants, yes, of the building, correct. And it is communal, um, the access before to get up for the mechanical was through a skylight over a stairwell, uh, right on the edge of the building, so there was, that's, that doesn't, there's no way for me to sign off on something like that, so we worked with stairs to get up there, we worked with neighbors who have roof decks and trying, at least in our own mind not to, you know, obstruct anything.
And you know, we standard, and our standard conditions on any roof decks are nothing flammable up there, nothing that'll blow away?
Correct.
That kind of stuff, okay?
Yeah, yeah, we know there'll be regulations to be held by the ownership, um, based on, you know, if we get approvals.
Other questions before I open it up?
Type of fencing that you'll be using?
It would be a, a vinyl or a composite railing around the deck.
How high?
Forty-two inches.
Forty-two?
Yep, correct.
Will you be putting greens up there, like plants and?
That would be up to the tenants on-
Okay.
Nothing that blows off.
Yeah, furniture, anything like that?
Yeah, makes sense.
Other questions? This is a public hearing, is there anybody here who wishes to speak on this? No, they, we don't buy, honest, give your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Melissa Thibodeau and I-
Talk directly into the microphone.
Melissa Thibodeau and I live at ten Beacon Street, so I'm like directly behind the house. And just a few concerns, obviously for self-interest, like we don't, uh, there's, um, let's see, five units in our building and, uh, no one else was able to come tonight, but they did speak with me and said, you know, we just wanna make sure that it's not gonna like block our view, you know, we have a really nice roof deck that we all are, um, really thoughtful about. We don't go up there during times that you wouldn't want people up there, we don't have extra people come, we don't have parties up there, like-
So tell me, which one, you're the house next door, is that what you mean?
I'm ten Beacon Street, so like-
Ten, okay, ten right there, okay, okay, yeah, all right, that's what I thought, okay.
I'm right here and I have a roof-
You're in the blue, in the blue building, that's you?
Um, it's a green building.
Oh, and then next to it?
Um, yes, I think it's that one, yes, yeah, and we actually put-
Yeah, we saw, you have a roof deck there.
We put like, um, the fake grass down because of the noise that, um, sometimes even during the day that people can hear in the building, so, I don't know, we're just really thoughtful about it and, you know, wanna like make sure that it's not something that's gonna like directly block our view. My boyfriend had mentioned something about like-
Talk to the microphone, please.
There are, like, there's a back stairwell that goes up to the roof currently in their, um, new place that does seem to impede our view a little bit, um, so it's just like a worry that, that we have. Also, we've had some difficulty with the crew, I'm so sorry to say that. We have had some concerns around like just, um, them starting construction so early in the morning. We have several people that live in our building that work overnights, we have a doctor that lives in our building. I work for the Department of Children and Families, I have a super serious job, um, as a manager there and we've had some concerns with the crew, um, at the building, we have tried to talk to- We have tried to talk to them repeatedly, and it has not always gone well. Um, they have blocked our cars, uh, when like trying to get out for work. Um, we've had concerns with some of the noise. Um, the conversations haven't gone super well. We've had times that we've gotten to screaming matches with them, we've complained, we've called the city. Um, it's totally fine to work during the day, and we totally understand, but it doesn't always seem like it's most respectful relationship between the two parties. So, that's our concern.
And while that's outside the purview of this, of the zoning board, it is not outside the purview of being nice.
Right, but it is, if they're gonna be doing construction, like, on this roof deck, it is like a concern that we have around...
Yeah, we can, we can, I don't know, can we limit ours to construction, John?
That's up to the inspectional services department and the police, chief.
I was gonna say, I didn't think that was in our purview.
Okay.
If you have any of those problems, you should go to inspectional services.
Yeah, I had called a few times, and it wasn't, wasn't a lot of responses, so...
Well, either that or your local representative.
Yeah, I, by all means, I apologize if I never was given your name or number, 'cause we would've dealt with anything immediately.
No, it wasn't you.
No, but it's my company, so if there was an issue, I wish we had a very positive...
So, why don't you guys, before you leave here today, share information?
Yeah, that sounds great. Yeah, it's not that we don't want it, like, it looks beautiful, the house looks great.
And to your, to your question, the construction of this is probably a two-week event. It's nothing near like what, what you've dealt with over the last six months, so. And we're trying to spend longer.
But that would still be nice to have those last two weeks be really pleasant.
Yeah, two weeks is great, and it looks really good. It's not the, the sight, it's just, um...
And design-wise, we're trying to be amenable, so we understand concerns, so share.
Yeah, and just like rules, you know, around like...
Talk into the, you can have a conversation, just talk into the microphone.
Yeah, just like rules around, like, I do worry about safety, like, if people are drinking up there, and there's a ton of people, like, I don't know if there's rules around how many people, like, you asked, how many people would you, are you able to cap it in the condo docks, or are you able to have rules? We have hours in our condo docks that you can use it, like that sort of thing.
We can't, yeah, we can't...
At there, you can discuss aside.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I've never been to anything like this, and I have no idea, and I didn't know where I was gonna speak.
You did great, there's no need to be worried, you did fine.
And I can speak on behalf of Mr. Jacob, the owner.
Talk into the microphone, please.
He is, he's been vetting out prospective tenants. He doesn't want those issues, he would be happy to share with you his, his phone number and contact as well.
Okay. Good neighbor, we have great neighbors, we have wonderful people that live there, so...
Okay, all right, shh, uh, conversation, it's either, yeah, you can do that after. Thank you, you did get any, I'm gonna leave the public portion of this hope, hope, uh, open, because we will be hearing it again in May 14th, at the senior center, which is across the street. Planning board on April 23rd, and currently, you're gonna have your conversations with your neighbor. So, we'll all be good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, last but not least, 2022-27, 168-170, 172 Maverick Street. Um, request for modification of the approved plan to include a roof deck. Uh, the question here is, is whether or not this is a major or minor mod. So, why don't you guys come up here and tell, introduce yourselves, tell us what you're proposing, and we can make, try to make that determination.
Hi, you know, my name is Mike Dedderding, and, um, so, it already had roof access and roof walkpads up on the, to protect our roof. So, in the, in the, uh, inspect, in the ordinance, railings aren't against anything, so we thought we should add roof decks at this point, 'cause it made sense. So, we're really here asking if we can add this to the special permit.
Well, tell us the size of it, so that we can...
So, each unit would have 15 by 15, and a portion of the headhouse, like 36 square feet, would be taken out of each person's deck area.
And so, you, so basically, right now, there's, the headhouses are there, but those are just for your, your HVAC and stuff?
Access up to the...
So, now, so what you wanna do is you wanna make some access for pleasure, for a green space, so to speak?
Yeah, it just seems, it's a beautiful view there, um...
How far are you from the edges?
You'll be about 12 feet all the way around from the edges.
And you know the rules around what you can have up there and what you can't have up there?
Yeah, so, if, if you were allowed in the condo docks, there'd be no grills, no furniture, you know, we would write these things in.
John, do you think it's, well, you have a question?
Yeah, so, that is a little piece of the roof for every apartment? It looks like there's four, right, four, two for each side?
Yes, each unit would have a 15 by 15, 'cause the yard is very, it's 10 by 20, like, they don't have much space, so it'd give them...
Would they be assigned, would areas be assigned to each, would it be a communal?
No, it'd be individual.
So, so each part of the deck would be assigned to a particular...
Correct, correct, like, that's why we do the cross railing, so they each have their own respective portion.
There will be access for 24/7?
24/7?
Yeah, there will have access?
Oh, I don't know if it's gonna be a disco, no, I'm just teasing, but if they live there, I don't know.
Could we require hours?
We could make a rule that they couldn't go up there, I guess, but...
Could we require hours? 'Cause we don't want people up there at 3 o'clock in the morning, having a party, and waking up the neighborhood, kinda thing, can we do that?
It would be very difficult to enforce.
I mean, we can require that there's no lights, you know, there's no, that kind of...
I have to do a light for safety, coming out the stairs?
But I mean, no big, you know, and people could always bring up, they can sit up there and bring up their flashlight, I mean, so...
I think it would go with the city ordinance on noise.
Yeah, you couldn't have...
I mean, I guess that's up to like the management of the building, to set rules, you know, and regulations, like, I mean, these are condos or, or apartments?
They're townhouses, yeah.
They're townhouses, so, like, there's a condo association, or...
Yeah, it could be written in the docs.
To set up a rule, you know, with like certain times, that you can't, you know, be up there. We don't wanna have to disturb our neighbors, kinda thing, you don't want the police showing up there at 3 o'clock in the morning, you know, kinda thing.
I understand.
It's also kind of like a liability to have people up there, and, you know, it could be potentially a liability, so...
I could have that written in the condo docs.
Yeah, but I think, yeah, I think that's always the, the chance to take with any roof deck.
Yeah.
It's like you gotta, it's long, so how, I'm gonna ask the same question that you asked earlier, how high is your, or, or is it Joan, how high is the fence?
So, I'm gonna do it at 46 inches, just a little higher than the 44 required. It's just, it'll feel safer, you know? And it would be metal poles with vinyl sleeves and, um, vinyl with aluminum in the railings, to give it strength.
Any other question? Well, what do you guys think, is it major, minor? John, what do you, what's the department's take?
Uh, department hasn't taken, the department hasn't taken an official step, um, position on it, um, but it doesn't need any additional zoning relief.
Oh, that's the question I would've had, yeah.
Yeah, um, so I would...
So, if they had come to us with this initially, they wouldn't have required any more relief than we already gave them. So, what are your thoughts about it being major or minor?
Minor.
It would be minor.
You go? Joan? Joan? Me, too. So, let's, do we have a mo, do we have a motion that this is a minor mod? Seconded by Joan, all in favor? Minor mod.
Thank you.
So, I will write a letter that will be placed in our files and ISD files, and once that letter is placed in there, you can go forward.
Is that 20 days, or?
Uh, give me about a week.